Call a meeting to order this evening, February 1st, 2019. The agenda has been posted and at this time at 7:15 we're going to continue the public hearing on special permit 290, site plan 58 for Eric and Linda Isen. The applicants are requesting to use up to three accessory buildings as an extension to the existing Bed and Breakfast, as a family campground. Property is located on South Bridge Road, also in order on the access map as lot 10. Is everything satisfied to you after speaking with Jack, Kathy and everything else? The understanding that we talked about last time, Jack, if they're separate?
Yep.
Again, Melissa and Sue, you know where we are, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, three individual cabins, right, are not attached, so it's...
Yep, so it falls under the rules and regulations of the family campground?
Yes.
But it'll be operated as an extension of the B and B for just over...
For you folks, it's an extension, but legally we have it that way.
Legally, it's family campground.
Great. The dimension squares, four inch and everything else hasn't changed, everything's still the same as on the application that we have in front of us, right?
Separate subject, separate well.
Right.
One cabin at a time, see how it goes.
With that, Kathy, did Jack have any other concerns, questions about what is going on now that they understand and he's spoken with him back and forth?
Yes, we're fine.
So he, the applicants are on the same page, we are on the same page?
Yeah.
And Sue, questions?
No.
Where it's going, what's going on?
No.
Melissa?
No.
All right, with Derek and Bob still absent, we can close the hearing with no other questions, okay? Do you have any other questions on the board?
Ezra.
Okay, you're all satisfied. All right, with that, is there a motion to close the hearing? Folks, before I do, the Bed and Breakfast on South Bridge Road, Laurel Lane, might someday want to take a ride down to speak to the folks in front of us this evening, it's a beautiful place. You think you're up at, you wouldn't think you're in Massachusetts, okay? Really. You take someone for a ride for an hour, blindfold them, and then take them down there and take the blindfold off, you're not Warren, you're not in Mass. What they're doing now is making an extension, you probably heard quickly, you've got three cabins going on, just like you see in some magazine from Maine, New Hampshire, on a lakefront, okay? The cabin they have, the existing Bed and Breakfast, is beautiful. You can Google their website, I'm not selling and I don't get a free night company, so for anybody that's going to make that comment, it ain't happening, all right? Although, to go down on the property to look at it and take a view of their website and everything else, you'd wonder, if you had friends that wanted to visit, you couldn't ask for a better place to put them up with, okay? They're going to put, as I said, three cabins, separate of it, and the food services and everything else will be in the main, wadi, and you'd just be able to sit back and relax. It's just one of Bay Area's still pristine in town that is set up for that. They've gone through the process with Jack, you heard me say that, specifically Board of Health, all squared, and tonight, what we'd like to do, as I just explained to you all, your folks, and you've heard, I'd like to close the hearing on it and let the process move on. Okay, so Derek is walking in, I'll give him a moment to sit down, I'll explain it to him, but, it's a plus for the town, using the word "but," and they put a lot of time and effort into it to establish a greater existence for themselves down there, and a greater area for people to come and just chill, or whatever the word is today. Derek, this is on the Bed and Breakfast. Jack has no problem with it, they understand that there'll be three individual, not as attachment to, but fall under the family campground, the three cabins, and then the Bed and Breakfast with it there, okay?
I feel so excited to have that in town.
Okay?
Especially so hidden, but so closed at the same time.
Yeah. With that, Derek, we had a couple moments of discussion, talked with them, Jack is all squared away. So with that, what I'd like to do is get a motion to close the public hearing, that's all at this time, to close the public hearing.
Make a motion, close the public hearing for special permit 290, site plan number 58, for Eric and Linda Isen.
Very good, motion made, second?
Second.
Second, any other conversation here? Any other comments to be held or heard by anybody here present this evening? All right, here and now, motion made, second and all in favor here.
Aye.
Aye and aye. Thank you, all set. That's all it takes, all right? Thank you very much for the proceeding and everything, not right now, no.
Okay, I'll let you know when they sign the decision.
Yep, go. Hold on.
Hold on. It's up to...
Hold on. Everybody has, first we want to close it, one of my chairs calls. With the decision that you have here, I want everybody now to take a look at it, make sure you feel what Kathy has...
I didn't give you all the pages, because...
Yeah.
I really made the work of paper.
I did that, so I didn't mean to slap it down, but I wanted that to get done, because you still have.
Yeah.
I understand, but if everybody is in agreement with it now, I understand. I'd like for everybody to review it, I already have. Do you have the review?
I do.
We have 90 days to make a decision. Once you close the hearing, folks, it's all been done, no comments can be made outside, no comments can be added to or changed or conditions. The only thing we can do is add orders or conditions to the decision. And with this, we've discussed it and we've closed the hearing, so we would have 90 days from this date to make a final decision, get it into the applicant, the applicant at that time give you the review, and that's the way it stands. What we have here tonight is everything was taken into consideration, Jack has no problems, Board of Health, the other three boards, you have two boards, excuse me, which is your building and your plum, excuse me, your building and your, Board of Health have no problems with the plans are drawn up, the way everything has been presented by the applicant to those boards here. We've had a discussion prior to that, they had to change a few things with Jack, and with this, we had taken the time to get the final decision typed up. It's not cut and dry, yet there are some more conditions in here that they've agreed upon, so tonight, we can at least, if the board feels, without having questions or concerns or wish for any alteration in the decision we can have here, that we have here, we can sign it or withhold it from signing it and let it ride until we further discuss it. Is that correct, Kathy? Okay.
I make a motion, sign it.
You've had an opportunity to read it, now that is what you're saying right now, you'd like to sign it, but withhold the motion for now. Let's take a time to, Derek, if you have any comments or whatever, go ahead.
It's the thing we just voted on, as the special permit 290, it's the house, the cabins.
Oh, the cabins.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's the next thing on the agenda.
Okay, I've had the opportunity to read them, I also have no problems with this.
The other thing is I'm going to have to change it, because we're expecting Bob to be here tonight, so we would have to change one thing on the middle page. So you want to wait and sign it? That's my day?
Yeah, okay? And that's the only reason we're waiting, is we don't have one of the board members here this evening who has been involved with it all the way. And I withhold any comment on Bob's decision, because he has a right to review it.
Right, I didn't email it.
Okay, so Sue, based on your motion, we're going to hold it for that, okay? All right, so this will be held till next Monday night, I'd like to have it on the agenda at first, okay? Put it on at 7:20 next Monday.
We have a...
Okay, fit it in if you can, all set?
We'll have it in there.
All right, thanks for bringing that up, and thanks for everybody making the decision on that. All right, let's move.
Oh, yes, that's quite a doubt.
The overall view is unbelievable, when you look at the area, you're from the... Here we go, four minutes, Kathy, do the payroll, please, go down to number eight. Payroll for Kathy's up in the amount of $197.40, is there a motion to accept that?
I make a motion with Kate Kathy, $197.40.
Ezra?
Ezra.
Ezra, motion made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
It's the paper, newspaper.
All right, six and seven, we're going to withhold, that's the budget annual report, something we don't need to address this evening. I invoice for Gate House, New England for public hearing, for temporary moratorium in the amount of $141.97, please, is there a motion?
I make a motion with Kate Gate House, New England, for public hearing, for temporary moratorium, as written.
May, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Yeah. Yeah. Everybody, for the board, continuation of public hearing, okay? So Bob tonight? No, Bob's out, second. Yep. Everybody's got the plans, so any other peoples who need, make sure you have it there. All right, what I'd like to do, it's at 7:30, this pertains to special permit 281, site plan 49. I was informed this evening that the applicant has taken offense to a comment I made. The comment was in jest, fellas, okay? I'm not slamming any of you, Michael, make sure this is on, I'm not slamming any of you, I have never slammed anybody. My comment about schizophrenia was just an off color. If you're going to take it personal and have the lawyers come in and me called in for a board hearing, that's fine, okay? I never intended, and many people in this town know, that I look at things in light. When it comes down to it, all we ask and all I ask, when anybody comes into this room, have it together and present it in a professional manner, okay? I'm not after anybody in here, I'm here for the town and the town's people, all right? I've been called in before, I've been sued before, and I sit here in front of everybody. I am not here for a personal reason, I have slammed no one. And if you wish for an apology, I will make a public one. I apologize for an off color comment not directed to anyone. Sam, you should know better than that with me, after sitting here and I taught last week science, but no, I just made a comment, and it was taken personal. If you're offended, I apologize to you. As far as your program, I got a nice letter from your lawyer, Cedar and Chandler. I don't know why, I spoke to a woman who walked in here last week, or five days ago, oh no, five weeks ago, all right, about a Form B, I'll leave it as a Form B. Then I get a letter slamming me and wanting to take action against me. We've had one Form B applied in this town before, we've never had another one. The bylaw says what it is, the woman came in, asked to do something, the town clerk came over, asked me, and I said, there's a form at, and there's a price fee, it has to be done this way. And then my other comment was, this is for a Form B application, nothing else at the time. Jeez, I don't know, guy must like to write, he writes well, all right? Ted Rodman, Todd Rodman, excuse me, didn't mean to slam it, I read it wrong, and all about appeals court and everything, never met the guy. He wants to come in, we'll talk. I have not said anything wrong about anything. Off color, why not joke around? You guys want to take it serious, go ahead. I take everything serious. Sir, go for it, you want to, you got to speak, go for it.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, I'm Todd Rodman, police...
Well, if you don't mind me, I'll interrupt you. I figured you would assume that these guys were attached, the lawyers assumes to me, but go ahead.
So, the letter that I wrote on January 18th was simply a reaction to what I had been told by the person from Andrews Engineering who had filed the preliminary subdivision plan.
Yep.
That they had been told by you that by filing the plan, we would be prevented from proceeding with the site plan and the special permit hearing, so...
For this special permit?
Yes.
No, go ahead, no, the clerk was there.
If that was the case, it was a misunderstanding, so what I was trying to do is just to make sure that it was clear that even though we filed for a preliminary subdivision plan to freeze the zoning, we're still entitled to proceed, so that was all...
Yeah, and that would have been brought up tonight, because we knew you had it.
Yes.
But Mrs. Alp and the town clerk and Laurie Shablon were all in the office, that was not the intent, there was not a comment like that, sir.
And I wasn't there, so my misunderstanding, then.
Well, I take that, thank you.
I wasn't there.
All right, you were across the hall, all right? But if everything, and please, everything is coming back with lawyers, and you all know, small towns can't afford, when it comes down to, if we challenge something, it just goes off the wall. We haven't challenged anything yet, we're still moving on with the process. I think the process personally, and for the board, I'm speaking for the board, the board has acted very professional. We have had questions for all of you, and that is the right for the town to protect. The questions we have, and have had, have been specific to nature, all right, and nothing in depth, and then when we have to listen, or we have conversations with your butters, the people around, and other townspeople, we've got to either raise their concerns or try to put their concerns into a question that is geared towards the project that's going on. People want to know, and you all know, if it was in your backyard, you'd have questions to, and you've done great, you've done well, and I think we presented good facts, our engineer, representing us graves, they do their job, and we might ask a few other questions because someone says, what do you think of this? All right, that's all we've been doing, and that's the way every applicant is dealt within this town, all right? All of yous have. We already have projects in town, and they were dealt the same way. When others come in, you learn your lessons. When you guys go out to different jobs, you learn different ways to do, different ways to do things and procedures, and how to present yourselves within the towns, okay? That's all. And again, please take my apology sincere about that comment I made, okay? Now, what I'd like to do, thank you all, what I'd like to do is move on. Jeff?
Mr. Chairman.
Do we have questions or any, what did we end up with, I'm sorry, folks, I lost my train of, what did we end up with? Jeff Blake is our representative from Graves Engineering, excuse me, yeah, I'm sorry, not Jeff Blake. Jeff Walsh is here representing our Graves Engineering. Jeff, go ahead, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you. For the record, my name is Jeff Walsh from Graves Engineering out of Worcester, we are the peer review consultant for this planning board. Mr. Chairman, we had been charged with reviewing the site plan application, stormwater and so on and so forth, we've issued a series of letters, our first letter was issued back on December 3rd, and then after that, the design team responded with revisions to the plans and so forth to address our engineering comments, and we issued a follow-up review letter on January 7th. Now, at that time, I'm going to go into a little bit of detail...
Fine, true.
But not talk specifically to these comments. At that time, stormwater management on the site consisted of detention basins, I reviewed again the plans, the stormwater, the supporting calculations, they met standard engineering requirements, I had no concerns, excuse me, with respect to compliance with the vast EEP stormwater management standards and handbook, and quite frankly, I was comfortable with the documents that were presented before you, and I can report to you again, as I did in that letter, that things were in work. I was unable to attend the public hearing on the evening of the 7th, and I understand that there was some discussion, we did discussion about stormwater and so forth, I did receive your request through your administrative assistant to look into a few issues, and I did so, and was prepared to speak with those, they had to deal with stormwater running in certain directions, potential impacts to abutting properties and so forth. I don't know if the applicant presented that evening or not, but nevertheless, I have my independent analysis of taking a harder look at those plans. Since that time, we were also provided with another set of plans that we reviewed and commented on by way of a letter that we issued earlier today. Of the three stormwater basins, one of the stormwater basins is composed near Little Rest Road, basically receives runoff from the driveway that's going to provide the access up to the solar array, there's no change to that stormwater basin. Two larger basins up on the site, there were modifications made to those, their footprint was basically enlarged, berm elevations, and if I remember right, possibly the outlet control devices were, had minor revisions to them. Soil testing was performed by the design team, at least there was soil testing information to support the fact that they had done soil testing, and the basins were redesigned, and the hydrology computations associated with those were put together to modify them from detention basins to infiltration basins. What that means is there's a component whereby it's intended to put some of the stormwater into the ground at those basins. The earlier design was a detention basin, inherently you might have some infiltration occurs, but they're not designed that way, or at least there's not backup information to say, look, if I had to comply with certain recharge requirements, here's my documentation to prove I do it. So, to that end, I reviewed the redesigned basins, the hydrology that went with them, and in fact, what I can tell this board is that there is a further reduction in peak rates of runoff aside, beyond what was already proposed. What was already proposed, the peak rates did not exceed the, the post-development peak rates did not exceed the pre. The infiltration basins further reduced those peak rates of runoff, and I did also receive a summary table from the design engineer this afternoon that basically quantified in greater detail the one we let it in. And furthermore, with the component of infiltration, the volumes runoff, this is how much runoff occurs over the duration of a storm event, the volumes runoff from the site under the detention basin mode, who slight increases, that's inherent, that's not unusual. And there was, if I remember right, we were talking percentages of maybe either 2% to 12% or 8% to 12%, I don't remember watching, I think we were down around 3% or 4%. I can get you the numbers if you need them, I have them in my notes. But with the revision to the infiltration basins, the volumes also decreased. So I was comfortable that I saw single digits to maybe 10% reductions in volume, I was very happy that I saw where we used to see, you know, up to maybe 10, 10-ish percent decreases in peak rates, we're now seeing up around 30%. So the whole, and I was on board with the modeling, the modeling was accurate, I'm comfortable with it, and I'm reporting through that the information submitted, I have no issues with respect to engineering.
With that, if we could get those numbers later, later date, if you could email them to Kathy tomorrow?
Mr. Bob has them.
Oh, okay, one way or another, that's fine. Derek, any questions?
Yes.
Go.
This is coming from what I heard from the neighbors.
Sure.
Let's say you live down, one of those properties down there, and they told me that this used to be a very nice wooded area, they used to hunt, they used to hike, very nice.
You're talking, this used to be wooded?
Yes.
All right.
Okay. Then some trees were cut down and they explained, they told us that, you know, they were having water problems, because they would have, their basins were getting water, there was an effect.
Okay.
So now, with all of this, do you think your house is not going to suffer more, or this is going to fix it?
Well, that's a tough question. The original conditions, woods before the tree clearing occurred, that produces less runoff than a site with tree, where tree clearing occurred. So the hydrology computations that they had put together under the pre-development conditions, they modeled with the trees fully on the site. So what I'm saying is the bar was, the peak rates in pre-development were low compared to if it's in the... to if it's in the condition it is now where trees have been removed. So, what I'm saying is, they took the conservative approach, not saying, well, look, we, we cleared trees here, and the site looks like this with a 50%, or whatever the trees missing, and we model it this way. That would mean that they're starting off with a higher peak rate of runoff than I'd be comfortable with. I think while somebody chose to clear the trees the last few years, that's great, but that shouldn't be the baseline for the development of the site. The development of the site should be with it fully wooded. Now, to try to answer your question, will the site make their problems better? I'll tell ya, I don't think there's any engineer working for a town who would sit in here and say, I can tell you, this is gonna happen, that's not gonna happen. What I can tell you is this, they modeled the site, pre-development conditions, fully wooded, that's, that established their baseline. Today, there's a different situation, which in theory, and in practice, if the site is developed, they should bring it down with fully vegetated grass, and the stormwater basins, they should bring it to conditions that would reduce the rates and volumes of runoff from the pre-development condition I spoke of. And in theory, make the existing conditions today that they're experiencing better, just from the development of the site, from a hydrologic perspective. That's how I see it.
So, if you were sitting there, you would be okay?
If I was sitting there, I, you know, I can't speak for their, their opinion.
No, I'm not forced to answer that question.
I'm trying to tell you that there is, from an engineering perspective, I can't find flaws to make you more comfortable, or the abutters more comfortable. That I can tell you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome.
Derek, any further?
I'll think about it.
Thoughts, okay, that's alright. Jefferson's doing our, what we've been talking about, what Jeff has been talking about here?
I go with what Jeff, he's the engineer, they use the numbers, he knows how to do it.
They did the work, I just reviewed it, but-
Yeah.
-it follows standard procedures, and people will say, hydrology computations, there's a bunch of numbers that smoke in there. Well, my job is to look at it, at the significance of there is, if there is an inside.
I think all we can do is go by what's presented to us, we can't go by what if, because we never know what if. I don't know.
You're right, in that one.
Yeah.
Very good, thank you. Who is it? Just one or two, Jeff, any applicants, I believe we talked about it last. Moving or adding a few more within the facility, would that make a difference?
More basins?
More basins within the facility, in different arrangements, so that from the tier down, you're actually stopping the flow, or the velocity of the flow in different ways, if you look at it. Let's put it this way, you have an engineer who does modeling, you set it all up with the grades, just the way it is presented, he or she or they look at it, it comes up with the grades percentage water, and you take the water at different times, and it's poured out so that it disperses around, okay? And I've seen different things done, that's why, that's why I'm trying to explain it. It's a principle for me, and whoever else may be on it too, that may need it. And you disperse retention ponds and infill ponds in different other areas, areas, add a few more, so that the velocity of water, when it does come out, and it does start to move to that, almost one point, which would be down in the lower, what I'll call it, this point, right in there, right in there, that wet spot. You would slow it down as best as you can, with those few extra ones added on the inside, and more direct as it comes over, washes down, comes over, washes down, taking a velocity of 10 and bring, hypothetically, folks, of 10 and bringing it down to a 5 or a 4 with a few more retention ponds placed within, because you can see how the water's gonna move once there's nothing there. Because if we, if we had walked out the property the way they have, we can see where the majority of the water's going, it's not going up into the left-hand corner, up by here, or south there, oh, it's coming across and down in here. Is that something that, yeah, yes, sir.
That's the way the water does move?
Yeah, and from your north corner, way up north off the sheet, it starts to come down.
Starts heading north, what, east, but then turns and goes east?
Yeah.
Basically falls down this way?
Yeah, 'cause your contours almost tell ya a lot of it, okay?
Perpendicular contours, absolutely.
Yeah, those are the things that folks are looking at, and what we were looking at too, that's why we asked for more of that. And again, the applicant, please. We have a fence line to our east that'll be there. Okay? That's running right up. If that water flows from your west to east and comes down, yes, sir? Now, take right where your fingers are halfway, right there, stop there, please. And the water runs underneath that, is that gonna create more of a wetlands for the people in the back? You know what I'm saying? If we can't direct it more into the south corner, with, is that gonna overflow during, again, this time of year, or excuse me, this year? We all gotta win. There's more water than anything, which is in California instead of here during the flood season. But, is that gonna create more of a wetland on personal properties in the background? Just on your-
Based on my experience and stuff?
Yeah, based on your experience, just there, I know you can't say, oh, yeah, it isn't, no, it's not, it's, that's what we're looking at. We're trying to protect the backgrounds for them people also, that I'll dry, and a couple of the applicants, excuse me, a couple of the abutters are pretty darn wet now, what can happen down the road, that's all.
Let me start by saying, wetland lines, as we've seen over time, can vary in farther uphill, or farther downhill, depending on specific site situations. I'd like to speak to the point of, well, development of the site and the hydrology associated with that, how would that play into potentially affecting wetland lines? To that, I would say, if we'd have to look at the topography of the wetland itself, is it really flat, where storing more water for a period of time means a greater lateral extent, and hence saturated conditions that otherwise didn't occur, and maybe the wetland could grow that way? Well, this isn't a level area, this is, this is, it's sloping down toward the south. On the USGS map that shows two defined channels going in a southerly direction, which I think might be on the set of plans on the second sheet, I don't know. Actually, if I could start right here, I know it's gonna be hard for everybody to see it, but I wanna try to churn it to the audience as well. Here's the site, here's the site, these are 10-foot topographic contours, and there's a couple of very well-defined channels going this way.
Yep.
And the southeast corner of the site discharges to one of those channels, and the point is, water discharged, whether it's spread out across the, the south end, which flows in an easterly direction, or if it's all brought to the southeast corner, either way, pretty quickly it's coming into that channel, and there's such topographic relief here that the water's headed south. So, I don't see anything on the USGS that tells me there's a large, flat area up around the southwest corner. So, from my perspective, from the potential of impounding water in the wetland system below the site for longer period of time, that would have to do with volumes of runoff, not necessarily rates. I don't see that being an impact.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And I do wanna point out that, as we've talked about in the public, first public hearing that I attended, is on the west side, there's basically a ridge here, and on the site property, the runoff tends to start heading easterly, and then either breaks north, up on the north end of the site, or breaks south, on the south end of the site. And on the west side of this is that other solar project from the Scottish Meadow, if I remember right.
Yeah, yeah.
That stormwater goes that direction.
Yep.
Because their stormwater basin is down here, just before the power lines.
Alright, thank you. Understood?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's say, what do we do if during construction, or after construction, one of the neighbors experiences major flooding? Is that possible?
I would have to say that nothing is impossible, just like I couldn't guarantee you earlier, but I get those calls from time to time, first thing I'd like to do is go out and find out what's going on. Is it design-related? Is it implementation of the design, what's happening during construction? Was there something that, even though they followed the plans, something breached? And try to find out what the cause of it is. Again, where, what I'm seeing as far as impacts and flooding to the abutters, again, because of that, at the south end of the site, that heavy valley that goes in a southerly direction, I'm not seeing that runoff is gonna go this way and, and cause problems to the, to those abutters. Yeah, with me, I'm off here. Now, as far as runoff coming from this area of the site, where the topography heads that direction, there is a swale that goes all the way up to the road and beyond. But the water going this way is gonna get into the swale and come down in this direction to the impoundment. So, if the swale is properly constructed, I'm not concerned with impact from this area to the abutters, I would be concerned if there's some kind of breach, or problem, or improper grading of the east side of the swale, that doesn't create a depression low enough to meet the plans. This is calling for a swale roughly about two feet deep at this point here, that's gonna take that water and direct it down in this, in this direction. And Mr. Chairman, to your point earlier about more basins spread out, this swale system in the, the impoundment here, in the sizes of the orifices here-
Yeah.
...serve the same purposes, taking a larger basin like this and spreading it out to these smaller basins up above. It basically serves the same purpose.
One more. Now, let's say that this is my project, okay? And I draw all this, and I, and then I go and look for you, and I say, hey, look, look at this plan. I wanna make the best plan solution so I can retain most of the water on the site, instead of letting it go outside the site. Is that possible?
Are you trying to take, are you trying to mimic existing conditions, or you're trying to just say, whatever hits the ground, I want it to infiltrate, I want it, I want it not to become runoff?
Correct.
Now, on the conservation commission side, water's gonna go somewhere, and the wetlands become wetlands because of their sources of water. I suspect that the source of the water down here might be very shallow groundwater, or even groundwater seepage that gets those types of plants to grow. And if you can make it infiltrate here, as long as it continues to come down here and feed that wetland over time, that's great. But if for some reason, it hits the veins and goes somewhere else, it doesn't get down here, something like that could theoretically potentially impact a wetland.
Okay, we make it better, or we can't make it better?
Yeah, well, you know, it's, I've got a client, a different municipal client, their goal is to mimic existing hydrologic conditions, and they look to not decrease nor increase volumes and rates of runoff. What they're trying to do is, and when they can, make flooding conditions better. That's always a real hard balance, because you've got so many storms you analyze, and you're looking at not only rates but volumes. But I've never, never heard of anybody say, I wanna take a site and make the runoff go away. And this would be an extremely difficult site for that to happen, because these are dense glacial tilts, as everyone knows, shallow groundwater, seepages, what rains, not a lot of water goes into the ground quickly. And to try to infiltrate 40-something inches a year, rainfall into those types of soils is very difficult.
Might be far bench. Everybody has to have a perk test, right? Everybody knows what I'm talking about, perk tests on your properties, and that shows you what, your water, your septic and everything else, the water tables are, water table can be at different levels at times of years. Did, Sam, I'm gonna look at you. Did you guys, did you guys do a couple up there? Have that perk kind of been done? Alright, I'm sorry, Sam, I was looking at you, the science guy. Alright, now we'll go with you.
Travis can answer that. Yeah, for the record, Travis from Andrew Servant Engineering, we did some soil testing on-site to determine groundwater depths.
Yep.
So, we meet our minimum groundwater depths at these infiltration basins, and then also to determine the soil class for infiltration.
Okay, is there, is there something in here that's gonna show it?
It's on the plans.
It is on the plan? Alright, where is it on the plan, just so we can look at it again?
Yep, I don't have it on this plan, the plan that I PDF'd, I do have that information.
Yeah, do we have that one, do you know? Did you send it to me on the computer?
I did.
Okay, we'll look for that, we'll look for that. These are the ones you can-
So, those are on the new plans that were given to Mr. Walsh-
Okay.
-yesterday, they were revised, so.
Can you just get a copy to us, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you. You know, soil consistency, and I'm learning, there's a great book, Stone by Stone, New England, alright? And it talks about all this, and I got into my, I've been reading it. It talks about the level of stone, how stone breaks down in soils and stuff, over the generations and millenniums and stuff, and then starts to rise and change, changes all around. This is specifically New England, Peterham, and Connecticut, right up through here, the book. And in that, when you did your boring tests to look at the soils, what kind of soil do you have? I didn't see anything in the big plans. What kind of soils do you have at 6, 18, and 36 inches? I don't know, I got engineers here. How many, what size bolts are you putting down? We can see that. And what is it going into? How is it going to hold? In five ye, yeah, stimming, and I will. In five years, after it's compacted and weathered, it's gonna, a lot of it is going to, based on what has been left over the thousands of years, it's gonna compact down, and is the same amount of water gonna be absorbed within it? I don't think so, just from listening. The soil is here, let's say X amount, let's say we're talking topsoil here, 6 inches of topsoil, and we get down in this stone, or sand, or whatever else that you found, which we'd like to see, as you said, you get to us. With that compactability, what is it doing to the waters now? And that's why I brought up the point about the water running across east to west, excuse me, west to east, and then coming down, Jeff brought up a point, I'll use Jeff's first name, into a swale. Now, everything's going to this swale, after four or five years in maintenance, which you said you fellas do, do, which is fine, you do the maintenance, you're doing maintenance on something five, eight, 10, 12, whatever years down the road, and it's gonna harden out eventually and bottom out, so far, it can only go down so far unless we have movement of the types of sediment underneath it. And that swale now can be not as big in four or five years. And can we have, I know it's hypothetical, can we have that water which Jeff and you, Travis, have spoke about, start to wash out and extend into a person's property? Those are the things these people are looking at, those are the things that down the road, you guys have moved on, a maintenance company comes in, and the swale's there, where do we go with that, if Jeff is called back five years from now, or eight? Where do we go with the problems answered? Go.
So, a couple of things, to answer your first question, what we're gonna put in the ground, is ground screws, they go between four and eight feet in the ground.
Four, alright. What's in that four to eight feet that you- What's in that four to eight feet that you're setting them in?
If you hit a ledge, which we do, you have to pre-drill it.
Yep.
So you can pre-drill the hole, you put the screw in, and then it holds. The depth of each screw depends on the water table. You have to get below the line so they don't frost heave. We've seen some scary stuff happen in Canada where they didn't go deep enough and they pop out of the ground. So we designed for that. We put it deep enough where that's not going to happen for the area. In terms of the maintenance, I think Rayo spoke last time just about proposed conditions for the stormwater.
Yep, what-if scenario, which our engineering has covered, you know, everything and more to comply with the biolog, to meet the requirements. But things could happen and the way you prevent them in every project I've done is with conditions.
Right.
Inspections during construction, O and M, and Cottick can talk about some of those.
So I came up with a few, you take them or leave them.
No.
But similar to the decommissioning bond, we thought about doing a maintenance bond. So say the swale gets half as deep or a shell, for whatever reason, and we don't fix it, you could then draw on that maintenance bond and fix it. So if something were to happen, if a basin failed or something like that, the town could go in if we didn't take action, which we would because we're the long-term owner-operator, we're going to maintain and do the mowings and all that. So we would post that and then we'd keep it in place with the bonding company. Should something go wrong, you can call on that and fix it. Do you refresh it? Yeah, refresh it every year, so it's continuing. Second thing, we have cameras on all of our sites. Really more for maintenance of how high is the grass? Is there snow? Why are we not getting production when the panels might be covered? So what we could do is we could put some of those cameras at these basins because we know it's such a concern of the neighbors and of the board. So we can monitor that. If it's not draining within the seventy-two hours that it's supposed to, you know, right into the ground, we would mobilize, go to site, figure out what's going on and fix it. We, the requirement for onsite inspections is monthly for the first six months. We could increase that. So we go monthly for the first two years in addition to watching it remotely. So we get someone on site minimum every month for the first two years, make sure that things don't fail, aren't eroding. And then from there on out, you know, we monitor it when we do the mowings and things like that. And then again, similar to that, you have to inspect the basins and the swales after every major rainfall over an inch. You have to go the next day. For the first six months, similar, we'd extend that to two years just to make sure that nothing happened. And then the last one, during construction, you have the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, which is a federal permit. It's pretty intense what you have to do. I mean, they're really on you. You can't flood neighbors because these basins will go in early, but you know, you're clear and then there's a period of time where the basins aren't in. But there's temporary, you know, hay bales and things like that to keep the water back. So as a condition to that, and this isn't quite related, but I know there was concerns about cleaning the road.
Yeah.
We'll do that as a condition to the SWIP, we have to do that. So again, unrelated, but I know it was a concern that was raised in the past. So that's it. Those are five and we happy to add more or modify them.
The last one is a town highway thing. We just got stuck. Okay, we just got stuck on one. And it was almost two days for the town spending this time up there cleaning up.
Right.
And again, for all of us here, for no response to a call. And that's, that's one of the other issues. You know, we're the owners for life. Okay, who do you call? But, I shouldn't say but, although with that, can we get just a copy of what we're thinking?
Of course, yep.
And then we can redo that also, right? The other, the other issue or it's an issue for all of us. You obviously know you've got one well, shallow well down there, okay? That is a big issue, guys, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm looking right at you and say, it's a big issue. Guy's got a well down there, family's got a well there, you know where it is and everything else. And that's why, you know, Jeff answered, you've had input, me tonight strongly on it. That southeast corner is, as you know, just soaking wet year-round. And with the well where it is, I'm stuck. What do we do? I don't know, I don't remember, Sue, it's the point that.
Yeah, I don't know exactly where the well is.
Okay.
We haven't been able to nail that down. But I think to that end, the biggest change that we made, and again, I wish Bob was here because he's worried about the volume of water.
Well, yeah.
That's the big change we made since the last meeting is the vol, it's not just the peak flow, which I think Bob said he's heard a hundred times, it's the volume. So there's less total water going that way. There's less total water going off south.
Which is.
Anywhere.
Yeah, oh, okay.
It's going into the ground, it's going into the parcel. So there's nothing else that's going to flow towards that well.
Yep.
More than flows now. And then, I mean, the other concern, it's total volume and then what's in it, right? Is that the concern? What's in the panels?
What's going to be washing down ten years from now and fifteen years?
Right. The panels are completely non-toxic. They're made of glass, plastic, polysilicon, and then, you know, their wires. The batteries, because there are batteries there, that's new. The lithium ion, like the one in your phone.
Yeah.
They have, they have fire suppression. But they have, we're going to do triple containment. So they have double containment built in, but we're going to put another, not like a stormwater basin, but like a hard plastic basin underneath just as a failsafe because we know that this is an issue for, for everybody. The double containment should catch, again, if anything ever leaked, which hopefully it doesn't, but we would do the triple just as a triple check. Other than that, the transformers have mineral oil, it's non-toxic.
Yep.
The inverters don't have any liquids in them, so there's not really anything else to get into the water more than does now.
Okay, yep, that's, with that, get that copy of that to me?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Sue, you're looking, you're listening?
Yeah, I'm listening. I think with his order of conditions, he's come up with more order of conditions.
Well, that stuff that can be, yeah, that stuff that can be considered, talked about, and then discussed again with the applicant.
So the things that you want, she's got, right?
Mm-hmm.
Everything that you wanted, she already has, Kathy already has.
Yeah.
Not what I just talked about.
No. The stuff right here.
Oh, the, in the piece, the thing in your PDF. Wasn't it with dirt?
No, I think.
Travis is going to get us a copy of all that.
Oh, okay.
I'll get it to you.
Yeah, thank you. Melissa, are you reading through? No, fine, because it's going to open up more down the road. Derek.
I'm still going through this.
And, for all, this is where we're learning more from you. You're listening to some stuff, I think, that we brought up tonight. Jeff has been, I think, answered a lot and based on experience in years too. So with that, do you feel the board, please, that the information's supplied tonight, when we get the stuff from them, we'll be able to be able to come back and let them know what we wish to look at next? Is that okay?
Yep.
Melissa? All right?
Yeah.
So, and then Bob will get everything that you guys get to us. Bob will get a copy of what we talked about this evening and then we'll schedule another meeting. I'm not prolonging it, fellas, but we'd like to get these answers done. We'd like to get everything. And then, I'm not looking to my left in the back tonight. I want everybody to absorb what came out and I want their input to come back to us. If we get input from them, you're going to get it prior to the next meeting. Is that okay?
Yes, that'd be great.
Thank you, thank you.
I do have one.
Go.
Just something I wanted to touch because I don't think we ever did.
Okay.
Just the benefits to the town of the project because I know they're considering a moratorium where projects of this scale won't, might not be allowed. Just quick hitters, the tax revenue from this will be at least forty-five thousand dollars a year for the town. It's going to be a community solar project, which I think I touched on, but that'll save residents of the town about sixty thousand dollars a year in aggregate. The town can buy credits, residents can buy credits, so you can save on your bill every single month. And then we're going to do a scholarship for a graduating senior, college scholarship, to a four-year school of ten thousand dollars per year, so forty thousand total, only to a Warren resident. So those are the quick numbers.
Could we get that too?
Yeah, of course.
So Bob will see it, yes, no, Derek, hold, go ahead.
Sure. I handed that out at the last meeting. It was a one-page, I can send it to you digitally.
Send it.
I'll save it.
And that's why I can just email it to them.
Yep.
And Derek?
Do you know how you mentioned a few minutes ago about the cameras and maintenance and all your, what you want to do and you're trying to do? And this about the extra benefits? It would be really nice if you can come up like a website and show that information for the public. You know, showing that you will have this, this and that and once everything has been built, any cameras, put a copy of the.
So you want monitoring?
Yeah, so they can, you know, so they can come and say, oh, let's look at that, you know, and have it. I don't know, something that we can tell the people, look, these guys are good. They want to do the best and this is what they proposed.
We have several of those systems in the Commonwealth already. The town of Lexington acquired that. That's integrated with the great, with the grade schools in town as well. So that's absolutely awesome, just add it to the list.
Good, that was, I was just going to add to that. Assigning teachers up to high school or someone talking solar, talking about what's going on, the generation to come, they can now switch onto your site or A site and zoom in and dissolve it.
Sure, seven.
Thank you. Derek?
Just adding to what I said because this is not all the people. You know, there's a lot of them, social media talking about it and saying, and there's a lot of missing information. And with something like that, it's a good tool, not only for the town, but for you to communicate your intent or they to look at you and what's been proposed.
Say, here it is.
Yeah.
So you're happy to do that?
Okay. Also, Kathy, a date, please.
I don't. Eighteenth, we can't, that's a holiday.
We're still on February nineteenth?
We're booked for March fourth. I don't know if you would have time next week because we only have.
Can we get the paper from you guys in the next couple days?
Tomorrow.
Listen, what, next couple days?
Yep.
What do we?
Because we have Borrego at, I think, seven-thirty. Okay, we could do them right after Borrego should take.
Uh, that'll give us time to review that stuff.
Because we had to move ZPT because Jeff doesn't have.
That's fine.
Because you won't be able to make that one.
I apologize if we have to.
Don't, Jeff, that's fine.
We moved it to March fourth.
March fourth?
Can we get? Yes, and we'll talk about that. Thank you, Jeff.
So could we do eleven?
Yes, yes. Just tell me when it's coming, I'll be here. Okay, two minutes after seventeen, seventeen, nineteen, seventeen? Uh, yeah, okay, get it to us.
Get you tomorrow.
That's okay, you're stretching your legs and going for the.
It's how I was raised, I'm sorry.
Okay, hey, all right, next week.
Thank you.
Seven forty, seven forty-five, quarter day, okay? Because we got a couple things to do before you. And that would be fine, all right, guys? Thank you very much. No, I, whoa! No, folks, until next week, seven forty-five, we'll continue. Thanks, guys, thank you, get that stuff.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. If there's anything, we'll get it right to you. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, folks, I want, you heard, we talked, get us something between now and next week on the desk. Anything else we can do, all right? I, yeah. Yeah, thanks, folks, everybody here, all right? That way Bob will be able to get ahold of everything and review it, okay? All right, that's up.
Want me to mail it to your board members?
Email it, yes.
What they sent me, you want me to mail it to you? Board doesn't.
If they come with that paper, with their orders of conditions, with their soils and stuff like that, let everybody have a look at it before we commit.
Okay. I'll email it to you first.
Is that okay?
So next week, you said the eleventh is Little Rest. I thought we just said something about the fourth.
God, next week is.
Borrego is next week.
Today's before, so today's February.
I'm going to rip off her calendar.
February eleventh, we're going to hear this.
Next week.
Borrego, but she said March fourth.
Borrego is next week.
And, and this one, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And then ZPT.
ZPT, we had to move to March fourth if Jeff cannot make it or have time to do it.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
You didn't have time to do the review.
Yeah, by the time you get it.
Because you only had a week.
Right. And Borrego, and Borrego stuff just showed up in our office today. So, hey, Jeff?
Yes, sir.
If you can't get at it, excuse me, if you can't get at it for next week, let us know.
I can.
Fine, we know now, you're making a thing. We're still going to meet with Borrego.
Sure, because they.
Thank you, we have to because it's a issue. Okay. Yeah, and we want to, we want to open the door.
Sure.
You get back to, say, this date, then we're going to give them the next date coming, okay? That'll take the pressures off there.
I owe you proposals for those two Borrego projects. The documents just arrived today.
Okay.
For Borrego or a ZPT?
I'm sorry, ZPT.
ZPT, okay, yeah.
Borrego.
That one you don't have yet because there, you had it from a long time ago. That was a site plan that you did, did you do that last year?
No. Borrego was done last year, it's Breezlands Orchards on South Street, going out of town. The apple orchard.
Oh, I didn't even saw that one, that doesn't ring a bell.
That was David Albright and Borrego. And that was going back to, oh, God, recently, that one, early May, May, June.
Oh, Cronin Road.
Cronin Road.
Yes, I'm sorry, I gave you the.
Okay, okay.
Off the south.
Great deal.
And you've had that.
Yes.
We don't.
Well, we did the site plan, but now because we changed it to special permit and site plan, they feel they need a special permit even though they had, were, got in before the amendments to the solar, but they want to come in, they filed for the application, so we have to hear it.
Sure.
So.
But the, the physical site as far as the layout, the hydrology, that's the same.
As far as we know, unless the lawyer wants something else.
Okay.
Okay, we don't know what the lawyer wants, so that's why we have to open the door again.
If you're ever concerned about whether or not you're looking at a set of plans and whether or not it's the same as what you permitted under the previous application, we can always do a very quick comparison if you will. To let you know if it's changed or not.
You just opened the door to that, that's great, thank you. But that's what we have next week, you know, I'm talking about.
Okay, okay.
You can wipe your brow. What I want, I would like you folks to get anything you want further to us based on the conversations tonight. And hopefully, if I may look at all of you in the eye, it's not stuff we've already discussed, okay? On this project, this project, okay? This is the project we're talking about now, not on hearsay or something that maybe I've said, I, it's to some. There is another project they, and I will say this, there is another project they wish to come forward with. I want stuff on, we would like, there is no lie, we would like further concerns on this so we can get the questions answered, okay? Further, further concerns on what, I'll use her first name, Jeff presented tonight, questions that he answered based on his experience and time, professionalism, and what was presented that way so we can nail, nail some of that shit to it, okay? All right. Okay, any comments or concerns right there? I'm looking at Little Rest first. Bob?
See, any contamination that comes out of those fields, which it's inevitable, it's a fact that if the glass gets cracked and takes on water, whether it's from manufacturing or it's a bad storm or something cracks the glass, it takes on water, it runs into the groundwater and now it contaminates my drinking water. And when they install their panels, that could affect the vein that supplies their well.
Say that, it affect what?
Affect the vein that feeds our well.
Yeah, okay.
By drilling, hammering. By drilling, hammering, that could change the vein, and I'll be spending $4,000 for a new well and... No reason for it.
Put that in writing and let us ask that question, okay? It's after the fact. I didn't ask for questions tonight. This is what I just asked to have done, is have that stuff put in writing. So when it's there, is there assurance? I don't know what we can work out with these people. I don't know. I'm not, you know, we, we're in the middle here, the board. We're listening, we're listening. If it doesn't come that way, that comes after the fact, it's gotta come in writing, so we have it. Yes, Jill?
Why can't you make, could you make it a contingency step? To do this field, before they do that, they have to drill him a deep-water drill. Well, they've got all kinds of money. Let them spend some.
That would never happen. Those are, those are things like, I'd, hey, I'd like to have my barn moved over twenty feet before Spain builds it. Don't laugh at this. I want my barn built, moved. I want it done before Spain brings the dozers in up there. It's closer to my house than anybody here, okay? I'm not saying anything about it. I'd like to have my barn moved over. Because what I have in my barn is on that side, and they're gonna be right there. I want you to move it before you build it. Those are things that, let, and I, yeah, we can ask that question, so...
What I worry about where I am, this house is being built right in front of me. My well, when he drills, I don't know how that's gonna affect mine, because I'm the only one, I think, in Warren that had good water. I don't have iron in it, and it was the only house up on Little, up on Coy Hill that didn't have to have a system.
Related to the contamination and to Jeff.
Jeff, do you know that they have to do an NIPTS permit and NPDES? That's the, um, the, the federal permit that they were, this gentleman here, I think his name is Carter, was talking about.
Yep.
For any disturbance, any construction disturbance of an acre or greater, they have to prepare a stormwater pollution prevention plan, SWPPT. They have to fill out what's called a notice of intent. Not the notice of intent that goes to the Conservation Commission that has to do with State Wetlands Protection Act. This is a notice of intent that's filed with the US EPA that they intend to engage in construction activities. And then they get it, they get a identification number, and then they can proceed. That's all under the NIPTS Phase Two, so they're obligated to fulfill that under federal requirements. In my experience with projects of this size, those SWPs get prepared, the notices of intent get filed, and the concern becomes whether they do their job of sediment and erosion control monitoring effectively. There's supposed to be self-policing under the NIPTS Phase Two. There's supposed to assign someone to, to monitor and make recommendations for site stabilization and sediment erosion control during the construction phase of the project. When construction's completed, the project is stabilized, they file what's called a notice of, a notice of termination with the EPA, and that ends that permit process.
Is there a way that we could get a report from them in these conditions?
I would suggest to this board that you could include a condition that says, please provide you, the applicant is to provide, planning board, a copy of the stormwater pollution prevention plan, the notice of intent documents, and all reports generated during construction associated with that permit. Kathy, I'm sorry, but you're gonna get a lot of paperwork or a lot of electronic files. But what, what it does is at least gives you an opportunity in town hall without chasing them to have this paperwork, these documents flow to you, you can see what's going on. And I'm sorry to say, some, some contractors and developers do a real good job fulfilling that construction phase monitoring requirement and reporting, some don't. And, and even if these guys do a good job, if you start using this condition, you may come, it may help set another project straight that is not, when somebody is not doing such a good job.
Is their initial permit application prior to the project being presented to a town?
No, it's, they could get permitted through the town completely. This is a, it's, it's a, basically a notification that occurs no more than a few days before the start of construction.
But it ha, excuse me to interrupt, but it has to be before the project starts under construction.
That is correct, absolutely.
Yeah, all right?
Yep, that's, yeah, and the nice thing about having a condition in your decision to say, just give us the paperwork, you're not asking for any of them to create new paperwork. Just make an extra copy or send the electronic files to one more person. So in, in my eyes, working for a regulator such as this board, you're asking for something, you're asking for something that they can easily provide. If they give you fight on it, maybe they don't want to get caught not doing what they're supposed to during construction phase by monitoring the site the way they should.
Okay, thank you.
You want a good question, Derek?
Anything else to follow for that?
Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, I don't mind being put on the spot, as long as I can answer it.
I just wanted to make my point.
No, I understood, and I learned that a few, few meetings ago, Derek.
And then, then they have someone on site to inspect, as I heard?
They're self-policing through the group, they're self-policing.
Okay.
That's, that's why not everybody does such a good job running the projects.
Yet being self-policing, policing under orders of conditions.
No, I, I, no, that's under the, okay, that's not self-policing.
No, 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 but knowing that they're self-policing, we can, under our orders of condition, ask them to have a copy of their review or policing as the project goes on.
Absolutely, thank you. You could even go farther and say, you know what? We want to have somebody come out every once in a while and, and observe construction and whether it's consistent with the plans at your expense, just like this peer review's going on.
Yes, sir.
We can do that.
Yep.
I am a CPESE Certified Professional in Erosion and Sediment Control, and I'm also a SESW certified erosion and sediment and stormwater monitoring. There, it's a couple, it's a private organization, it's got like four of these things. But unfortunately, that's the only organization that has them. So I've, I've gotten those, and it's for construction phase monitoring.
Okay.
And, um, other communities will sometimes do that. In other words, once every couple weeks, whatever, whatever you feel is comfortable, just like checking their pulse and how are they really doing? You're getting all this paperwork in, but are they doing a good job or not? Somebody on your behalf can set foot on the site, walk through the site, and, and, you know, with them and have a look at it.
The one, the one...
To a lesser extent, but yes, yes, yep, yep.
It, it's not a, an announced or announced?
Announced. I definitely want it announced, but what they're doing, it's not like they can shift gears in a few hours.
That's where I was gonna go with that, too. If it's announced, everybody wears their helmets and the porta-potties and... Okay? If it's not announced, you got a guy walking in and say, oh, I ain't going in there, or what the heck did you do here? But it is announced, okay, and it, that'll take the other part of your comment. Something they're not gonna be able to change or cover up within, you know, the day you're coming out.
No, no, and for erosion and sediment control practices, you can usually tell. I mean, for, especially for perimeter monitoring and so forth, what's telling, you know, the sweeping. Okay, that's the one thing that, okay, they start sweeping because, oh, yeah, Jeff's coming on on Tuesday at noon time.
Yeah.
So the sweeping starts at 11:00 AM or something like that, yeah.
Very good. All right, any further, Sue? Mike, have a good night. We'll see ya. Glad you're listening.
Well, I seen last week's video. I thought this was gonna be more than just a Patreon Super Bowl.
Yeah, okay.
Um, I forget the exact requirements, but it's about, about that.
Yes.
And after certain size storm events. It's very clearly called out in the, in the NIPTS documents. I just don't remember all those details off the top of my head. You're welcome.
I have the website. I'll send it to you.
Perfect, thank you.
Anything else?
Just a small comment.
Okay.
Last week I went on a helicopter ride and was so sad to see so many solar panels. Now the choose it has changed.
All right, Jeff, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the work. We'll be in touch. You know what we're asking for, the sooner you get it in, the better off we're gonna be for next week, okay? I don't think it was too short of a time to give them that window. They're gonna get us the paperwork, we can get it out. Kathy, and again, Kathy just emails to the board what is, we've asked for. We have no discussion. Everybody's at, at least up to date when they walk in, because it's just getting to be a, oof, a time, okay? With that, is there a motion to adjourn, please?
No, we got minutes.
Oh, yeah, we got the minutes.
We're just gonna...
Okay, we got the minutes. All right, other than that, folks, thank you. We have a couple of minor things here on the agenda. All right, here we go. Jeff, when is it? Are there comments or concerns?
No, it's under...
FYE budget or FYE annual report?
Let's go to your minutes, please.
Yeah, we cannot do the seventeenth because Sue wouldn't want to be there and Bob's not here.
Oh, boy, all these attached things are...
We killed a tree this week.
I like when you said the ground was, it's all year round saturated with water. Because I was talking with some engineers, and they said water runoff is just the peak of the iceberg in a project like this. If the water table, the water levels go down below, that starts going up.
Yep.
Some of this paperwork that we got to tell the stormwater and...
Which one am I looking for, twenty-eight? There's too much on that. Twenty-eighth, please. Everybody take a look at the minutes of the twenty-eighth.
You're in the file on the front.
Is there a motion to accept the minutes of January twenty-eighth, please?
I don't have a motion to accept the minutes of January twenty-eighth.
Motion made, Derek, can be already read it. Finishing up, taking it down.
I'm reading it, Gary.
Just Melissa? Motion made second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, um, we were asked to attend the selectmen's meeting on the fourteenth of February at six-thirty.
Valentine's Day?
Yes. They're bringing us candy.
Yeah, bring your wife.
They want all of us or...
Yeah, it's for Valentine's Day dinner.
You're right.
They're picking up the tab.
I have to let you know, because Tuesdays are my nights that I go in.
That's a Thursday.
Oh, it's a Thursday, okay.
They're picking up the tab at six-thirty here?
Yes.
We'll, I'll get back to you on that, but just circle it and, um, be aware of it. Unless, if I call you, we'll try to take care of it beforehand. I don't know yet.
What's it in regards to?
I have no idea what it's, but we have no idea what it's about right now, so we'll get back. They just want us to show them. I think it probably has to do, if anything, about the budget. That's all ours. I think they want the input from all of us. Kathy, I've got special permit and site plan approval for towns. That's gonna be it, right? And this one, the in Brookfield, that's all?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Jeff, what is this?
That came in the mail.
Certified copy, board of selected?
But look at the other side of it.
Yes, it's one plan.
Well, on the other side of the green thing. That's why I put it there, because you're gonna check a lot of it.
Who sent this?
I believe it's the owner of the property sent it.
That's pretty interesting, going around town here, I mean, around state. All right. This is an applicant copy, Brookfield Planning Board, notes of public hearing. Chapter forty-eight and the provision of Brookfield zoning bylaws. I don't know why it's coming here, but for a public hearing, and I don't know why Brookfield's talking to us.
Because that is the property on Cronin Road that they're gonna use to drive where they've talked about.
That is, and that is, property for reference, Cronin Road. Go up and take a left on Cronin and go all the way down, four fifty-two Cronin Road. Two properties, and they're gonna use an access, it's gonna go up.
Where just the access?
The access is gonna go up through the one property into the back of Brookfield. The engineer sat right there and talked, uh, maybe one...
I remember this one.
Okay, and the engineer's gonna build in Brookfield. Okay, so this is just to let everybody know, the hearing will take place Wednesday, February sixth, two days, at the Town Hall, Sixth Central Street. And it's in reference to Stevie Scavera. Stevie has been in, and it's property owned by James Evan Turner and Stevie Scavera, located on zero off Cronin Road, okay? And zero Long Hill District, Brookfield. Accesses, the access to the property is through Warren. That dirt road, he wants to build up through the property and go over into Brookfield. So that's beginning of a project in Brookfield going from Warren, Stevie and Turner own that property. Stevie and Turner own that property. Yeah, it'll be interesting.
That was a pretty steep site, too, wasn't it?
Oh, yeah, the backside is, and getting up there is, because there are concerns about conservation. Down to Warren Planning Board. Where? Well, yeah, but I'm looking, it says Hyford, Connecticut.
Oh, probably got mailed it, one of their things, because it used to be if you mailed here, it got stamped in Springfield, because they...
Oh, okay, this, this is, it is a postage stamp, Hyford, Connecticut, how about that?
Everything goes there now.
Yeah. Please be advised, the Ware Planning Board has granted, with conditions, special permit so-and-so for FT Smith Trucking Excavating, Inc., to continue the, it's an earth removal permit granted and continued, the zoning bylaws on, at Greenwich Road in Ware, Mass. It's an existing permit that's been continued and granted to further, they wish to attend a hearing on February 12th. Down to Ware again, has a budget. Special permit and approved for the site for Bee/Leaf Wellness Center, LLC, to operate a cannabis, marijuana retail establishment. And the decision was filed at the court's office in January 22nd. And please note, there, there is a 20-day appeal period, during the appeal period, you or anyone else can appeal the decision by Ware, but they've decided to grant this permit.
Is that on West Street, or is that on, does it say East?
At 60 Main Street, Ware, on Main Street. Zoning bylaw of 4.8.8.
Is that at the end by Kula?
Can tell you.
Trump store.
Bee Leaf, that might be.
I know some of the, a couple were going, trying to go into the old mill building where the gym is and everything. They've got like three or four, I think.
That's that, and this is from Ware again. Site plan, have, have approved the site plan with conditions for Mike Andrews.
That's the guy, that's the storage guy.
Yeah, he's down Bathurst, CBS, or Walgreens.
To construct and operate a self-storage facility, zoning bylaw in 167 West Street.
That was optioned by Post office there, in between, okay.
The decision that was filed at the Town Court, in the 20-day appeal period, you have the right. But that's Mike Andrews, the fellow that built these.
I saw Mike over there one day, my kid, and I'm like, what are you doing here?
All right, that's it.
What the heck's going on here?
That's it, for the big board here. Kathy, there are a couple things that'll be coming in, and we'll address that.
Yep.
With everything else, once they get back, Sue, you made a comment about the, uh, the conditions that they were starting to set. We'll take a look at all of them first, and then we'll follow that up, because...
But I mean, I thought that was, um...
They're reaching out.
Reaching out, and then, like that other guy said, they have something in the school system in Lexington.
That was a great question.
Yeah.
And that'll... That's one thing, they, they wanna be more transparent, more useful with everybody, that's the way to do it. Okay, with that, I'll say, with a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, very good.